It's now seven o'clock. I welcome everyone to the March 21st, 2024 Planning Board Meeting. We do have a public hearing this evening. I will ask if anyone in the audience would like to speak. Please approach the podium to do so. Take your name and address. And I guess we'll get going. Looking for a motion to approve the minutes of the February 1st?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of February 15th.
All in favor?
Motion passes five to zero. Time for Chairman's update. The only thing that we really have is discussion to call 860 into the board for chat. And possibly, I don't know if anyone can make it, a site meeting to have a walkthrough. They'd probably best to do it during the hours of operation. I don't know if we can do that though.
Mr. Chair, do we already have a date, a scheduled date for them to come before the board?
We do have a date. It's in the first meeting in April. I was hoping to get out to the field to have a look around beforehand. They do work Saturdays. I just don't know who's in on Saturday.
For the project?
For the project. And I don't know how much notice. Chris, do we need to give them notice that we're going to visit their site? Or can we just go anytime?
You can just go to the site. Staff will let you know, but you don't have to. You have a right to go out on the site to inspect for compliance with your permit.
I'll make myself available at any time.
You too.
Site visit, Mark?
A site visit for 860 roadway?
Love to. Love to.
What works for everyone?
It's free tomorrow. It'll be a Saturday, right?
Yeah, it'll be a Saturday.
I mean, I'm retired, so you can do something. I don't care.
But we might not be able to get in on Saturday. They work there every Saturday?
Every Saturday they've been there working.
There's a lot key.
I will let them know just to ensure you have access. But all you got to do is give me a window.
Okay.
And make sure you can get out of the way.
Saturday's 11:00. On 11:00. 11:00. Not too late?
11:00. You'll get your saddle.
It's time to break through.
Get up a little early.
It's going to be tough these days.
Okay.
Do you do it on Friday afternoons?
Friday afternoons?
It's good to.
May she what?
Tomorrow, Friday?
Yeah.
That should be fine.
Tomorrow, the 22nd?
Too soon, Chris?
No. It's early. We're going to make it.
I think I'm good.
You're usually in the office harassing me on a Friday afternoon at that hour.
You're in your office.
Do my windows to what time? What time do you think? 1:30, 2:00?
2:00.
2? 2:00. What works for you? I'm sure.
I'm going to the switch. I'm unavailable.
You're always unavailable.
I'm going to work 5:00 AM to 7:00 PM tomorrow.
All right, so tomorrow at 2:00?
Tomorrow at 2:00?
2:00.
Tomorrow at 2:00?
How long do you think you'll?
Do you want to do earlier? We can do earlier.
What works for you?
Earlier better?
Yeah.
1:00?
12:30?
12:00 would be more for me. I might at least be there for a little.
12:00?
12:00.
Can you do 12:00?
Yep.
Bring your picnic.
Tomorrow at 12:00.
Tomorrow at 12:00.
Right at the gate.
Do you need hot hats for that?
Yeah, they're going to make you put your hats on.
Can I supply them or?
I have my own hot hat.
You don't have to bring one.
Moving on to the cult consulting engineer report. Mr. Durkin, do you have any news for the board?
No, but just some specific items when you get into the items on the agenda.
Okay, thank you, sir. Back to our planning director, Mr. Riley. Do you have anything that you'd like to add?
I don't have anything, Mr. Chair, thank you. But just a sort of administrative item through you to the board. Bob has asked for a zoning map. Believe it or not, we don't have an official one. Planning Board is the keeper of the official zoning map. The Inspection Services Department interprets it. So they have all these folders of individual maps. And that's how they do it. But I have ordered from MAPC the latest official zoning map. And they're going to print it in a big, high detail format like that. So that will be available wherever the Planning Board wants. We can give it to the Planning Board. Clerk's office or the planning office, whatever you prefer. But so we have a large format zoning map, which we're required to by law.
Is that not correct? I got that from that organization.
Yeah, I think that's correct, but it's been updated. I think some layers have been added. So it will have the streets, street names.
Okay, I don't have that version.
That's fine, but it'll be a much higher resolution, which is helpful. The real issue is interpreting the boundaries of the zone.
Correct. I've been trying to find a higher resolution one, and I haven't been able.
Yeah, so they're sending one.
Oh, good.
So they say. So that'll. I told them four copies, so I'll pass them over again.
Mr. Durkin? Could we have several copies posted? One, at least one or two copies posted at the town hall and a copy up here.
Sure.
So that. It used to be years ago, you know, we had the R1, R2, et cetera, et cetera. It was pretty simple. We didn't have all this multiple zoning districts. It used to actually be posted at the town hall.
Correct.
So if we do that again, I think the public would be, would receive it, those who are interested, as well as us, that we can. Now, we're always floating through the place. We can always reference it.
We're required to have one available to the public. Official zoning map. So I will take care of that. And I will say to anybody who's watching that's interested in this, there is something online that's free. It's a website. And if you type into your browser Saugus GIS, one word, GIS, stands for Geographic Information Systems, you will be brought into this wonderful website portal with all our geographic data for the town, including the zoning map. You have to play with it a little bit. You'll learn how to use it within a half an hour. And then you have all that information right at your fingertips. So. And that's what we use to interpret a lot of the zoning. So just so folks know, that you can add that resource.
Any questions from the board members? Thank you, sir. Any questions from board members? We have a couple of minutes before the 7:15. We'll take a recess. Larry's had nothing left for reports on the record.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to take a five-minute recess.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion passes five to zero. We'll take a five-minute recess before we start the public hearing. It's now 7:15. I'd like to open up the public hearing for Berthold Extension, definitive subdivision approval. We have the applicant with us.
Good evening. My name is Mark Chaplin. I represent the applicant, American Residential Construction. We have its manager, John Tucci, here tonight, along with John Dick, our wetland scientist, and Paul Finocchio, our land surveyor. We're here seeking an extension of a subdivision plan that had been previously approved and had since expired by this board back on June 18th, 2015. We were here just over two years ago, seeking an extension of the subdivision plan. However, there were some issues still outstanding, namely, the DEP had a stop work on it. We've since, with the help of Mr. Dick, were able to get all the issues cleared up with the Concom and with the DEP. And this project is shovel-ready as it can be, subject to your approval. Just a very, very brief history lesson on this lot. We originally, back in 2015, this was brought forward as a subdivision plan, even though it probably fit the criteria for an A&R plan. The reason why that was done and the reason why I bring it up now is because Rick Salvo, who designed the subdivision, he wanted to make sure that the Planning Board had an opportunity to really take a look at the drainage and make sure that this was a project that would work. So you'll notice it's a four-lot subdivision, seeking three homes. The fourth lot is largely comprised of conservation land in the drainage area. So there is a hill that slopes down from Ellen Court down to the cul-de-sac. That drains into what's known as Lot 4, which is a micro pool. That micro pool is completed. The water is run. The sewer is run. What we're really at the point now is a binder coat and getting this to a point where we can start asking for lots to be released. AA Doherty did issue a plenary bond. So once we're under an approval status, we'll certainly bring that to your attention and hopefully begin the process of getting this finished. But I'm here for any questions. I have the applicant, as well as our engineer and scientist.
I have a few questions, if I may. You said that the binder coat is down?
The binder coat's not down.
It's not down? I was involved in this site walkthrough. I think you were there, John, the last time we were out there. Two years ago. Has the lot been cleaned up?
It hasn't been cleaned up.
Okay, because that was a disaster out there.
Yep, took all those hazards out, metal roads.
There is an issue with the DPW that they never called Todd Burton for inspections. So the DPW has never inspected any of the utilities for the lot site. And they were told that they had to be inspected by the DPW. So you may have to, I don't know, refer the town engineer. Mr. Durkin? Inspection? The tie-ins and the loop?
I'm just aware of this project because of the agenda, and I'm not familiar with this project before. Mr. Tucci has come in and he's at least once, and he's shared with me in my engineer's report some correspondence, and he's provided me with plans. The issues with the DPW, I did discuss this project at least once with the DPW, and I'm not aware of these issues.
Do we know if the bulkhead on the bridge has ever been addressed? It was listing towards the wetlands?
So there, I believe it's the last page of the packet that I gave, or the second to left, the last page. That is a wall, a site wall plan that will show essentially the top layer of that wall needs to be removed and re-straightened.
So, Jack, you mean the plan?
The plans that I have provided, did, I don't know, did the smaller set come to you?
No.
No.
Okay. There was a stack of smaller sets also dropped off.
We have full-size sets. We don't even look at the small ones.
Okay, well, we put the large ones in too. So I believe it's the last page in the set of plans. I'm sure the wall's going to be straightened. It's, the engineer came down to look at the wall, and it's really that top layer, the top level, that has shifted towards the wetland. So that needs to be removed and reset.
We already reset this wall once already.
Yes. When it was originally put in, it, there was a partial collapse of the wall. That was close to 10 years ago at this point, though. So that was reset immediately, and it's held up since. It's just that top layer that's pushed forward a bit. But it's, the wall has been designed by an engineer and will be constructed certainly with a stamped plan, both before and after.
Okay, so it is over four feet?
Yes.
So you will include that as part of your permitting process?
Yes.
How high is the wall being?
Total, what's?
I think it's four blocks, so two foot, eight feet.
We received some information.
From Conservation?
From Conservation this afternoon. You say that all your conservation issues have been dealt with?
I believe so.
So they had said there were a couple of things outstanding. Do you want me to read what you wrote?
Yeah, sure.
So the Saugus Conservation Commission shall include a special condition that prohibits work to commence on the site until proof of the deed restriction has been approved by Mast D E P for endorsement, executed by the Saugus Town Board of Selectmen and the Conservation Commission, and recorded at the Registry of Deeds. In addition to this requirement, the Commission has an additional requirement before the work can start. The multi-year surety performance bond, a letter of credit, deposit of money, or negotiable securities in the amount of $10,000 payable to the Town of Saugus upon default, in all respects satisfactory to the Town of Saugus. And the Saugus Conservation Commission shall be deposited with the Secretary of the Saugus Conservation Committee before the Town of Saugus, before you can start work. Said instruments subsequently shall be posted by the Secretary of the Saugus Conservation Commission with the Treasury of the Town of Saugus. Said instruments shall be conditioned on the completion of all conditions herein, shall be signed by the party or party satisfactory to the Saugus Conservation Commission and Town Council, shall be released after completion of the project and a certificate of compliance is issued. And this is for the roadway only. These two items must be completed prior to any work beginning. Also, the two original lots were under conservation jurisdiction, and notices of intent would have to be filed before start of building on those lots.
That's correct. So on the notice of intent for those new lots, we can't file those until it's an active subdivision once again. So right now, in its expired state, we can't go forward and file the notice of intent on the two lots because they don't technically exist until the extension is signed. As far as the deed restriction issue goes, that's something we've been working with the DEP for quite some time on. Excuse me. The DEP is asking for a water quality test instead of a deed restriction. And John Dick can certainly probably explain it much better than I can. But long story short, they've requested that we go the process of the water quality test rather than the deed restriction, over our objection at this point. So that is something we are addressing. And if there's any questions on that specific issue, I'm sure Mr. Dick could answer them.
Who placed the deed restriction upon the property?
That was placed by the Concom. Well, that was placed by the Concom with the original subdivision.
State Concom?
Sorry. The towns.
The town.
So have you discussed that alternative with them? Because if they put that as a condition, then you would have to, I would think you would have to.
Yes. John, have you spoken to them?
Yes. Alan, you do it. The Conservation Commission.
Would you take your name?
I'm sorry, I'm John Dick.
Yes, sir.
I'm a wetland scientist. I went before the Conservation Commission last September. And at that time, we had been waiting 10 months for the state to approve the conservation restriction. Initially, when the wall failed, there was an impact on the wetlands. Conservation Commission got involved, the state came in, wrote a superseding order. And long story short, at that time, we were directed to file a conservation restriction, which we did. That conservation restriction now is a year out. Now DEP has changed their story. They would like us to do a water quality certificate instead. The water quality certificate depended on getting Conservation Commission approval. I have Conservation Commission approval. We have a situation where the wall needs attention. So I got an emergency cert for that. It turned out it wasn't that urgent. But long story short, one way or the other, we're going to satisfy the state's changing requirements regarding a conservation restriction or a water quality cert. At this point, we just can't get a clear answer from them.
So you have nothing in writing from the DEP, Mast D E P?
All we've got at this point is the original water quality cert that was filed last March, early last March. And we're still waiting for DEP basically to come forward and say either forget about the water quality, I'm sorry, the restriction, or file the water quality cert. In either case, we had to go back to the Conservation Commission first. And as Attorney Chaplin has explained, we can't do any work on the site except for emergency repairs until and unless we have an active subdivision. So it's kind of a, you know, which shoe do you stick in the door first?
And I'll refer to General Counsel. Jesse, we really can't move forward on this without the requirements that are from this department.
For the record, Attorney Jesse Schumer, Special Town Counsel. I would want to reserve recommendations on this one, John, because I don't know anything about the file. The question is as to compliance with existing order from the Conservation Commission. Is that your concern?
Yeah, I see nothing waived. I do have the order, but I see that it has nothing waived.
Well, just trying to follow the conversation, it sounds like what Cheney mentioned is correct, that if there's been a change, they would potentially need to go back to the Conservation Commission. As a general matter, I wouldn't think that that would necessarily have to affect your board and what you're being requested to do.
Yes, we would have to modify.
Mr. Durkin? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I just have one quick question. Has the state lifted their cease and desist order?
No. And that's, that's part of the problem, is that we're working to come into compliance with wetland replication and mitigation for the damage that was done to, by the wall. But all of that, our hands are tied. We don't have a deed restriction. We don't have a water quality cert. We don't have clear direction from the state. Every time I talk to them, they're back and forth on, well, you know, the attorney's still reviewing it. Well, she's had since last March. It was.
And if I'm correct, I don't believe that we can supersede a state stop work on it to even go forward.
Well, you, the Planning Board has no, has no role in the conservation process whatsoever.
My question is, if we go ahead and grant the extension, we can grant the extension for, for the subdivision, but they can't, they still can't start work there because they would still be bound by the conservation. But we could still grant the extension. So then you could start the other process for the other things?
Yes. And that'll put us back before the Conservation Commission. Mr. Durkin?
Yeah, excuse me. I'm just getting familiarized with this. Actually, friends of mine lived on Noble Road, so I've seen you start some stops on that development for years. By the way, Berthold, is there a street sign that says Berthold?
Yes.
Is it now? I was here a couple of days ago. Obviously missed it. Didn't have the glasses on. The bond that you have, what does the bond actually cover? For how much is it? And when does it expire?
There's a new bond that would be issued.
Will be issued.
So as of today, we have from AA Doherty, they have a $200,000 site completion bond as pre-approved. They've offered conditional preliminary approval. So.
Do you have anything in writing from the bonds?
Yes.
We have multiple copies, if anyone else would like one.
Anyone else like one?
We can answer the question, I believe.
And while you're distributing, when is the bond expected to expire?
Typically, it's one year is what the expectation is that these will be completed.
It's how long?
One year, and then we need to go in for a renewal.
This new one?
This new one. I believe the bonds go for a year, and then we need to renew it.
If, Mr. Chairman, so really, the state's still holding you up, and you can't proceed?
We can't proceed until we have an active subdivision. Once we have an active subdivision, we can then go to the.
Active subdivision, what are you saying?
Because we're in an expired state right now. So because the subdivision is technically expired, we need this to be extended so that we can then take that then active subdivision that is not expired, and we can go to the Conservation Commission, file a notice of intent for lots one and lot two, and finalize the process with the DEP. We can't finalize the process with the DEP because we can't work on the site. So we're kind of, hands are tied, but it all starts at this level from here. We can't do anything. We can't come to this board and ask for anything to be.
Give us step one, step two, step three. What are you looking to do tonight? Step one is what?
Tonight, we're looking to extend the subdivision plan.
Hold on.
One year.
And then?
During that year, we will go to the Conservation Commission, file a notice of intent for lot one and lot two. The plan of work will all, that will be submitted to the DEP with Mr. Dick's assistance of what we need to do to finalize any wetland restoration or replication and get that to a state that the DEP will give the town's Conservation Commission the green light to sign off on it.
How soon would you expect that to happen?
I will, we will try to get onto their next meeting. We, everything's in order from our end. We just need to, once this is approved, we can then take the next step of going to the Conservation Commission and asking them for the notice of intent and to go through that process.
Can't do a roadwork either?
We cannot. We don't have an active subdivision plan, so.
That's a mess.
Yes. It's, it's better presently than it was just a month ago, but it's still a mess. So as soon as we have the, the green light from this board to move forward, we'll be working with the Concom and the DEP for whatever permissions we need to make sure that we can begin the process of getting this road where it needs to be.
Are you looking for a one-year extension?
Yes.
That's why there's one year.
One-year extension.
Do you have something in writing for that?
With, with the packet that was put in, we did put in an extension request. I'm sorry, I do only have one copy of it. I'm not specifically asking for a one-year extension on it, but we're asking for an
Well, I mean, this has been so long in development, it's time to bring it to an end.
We agree.
All right. If I were to name up there, I'd have signs all over the place. That would be very favorable to you, to your clients. As I said, that road where it goes in, Berthold, has been that way for a long time. I could have seen you having some problems because the land's difficult. But this isn't the situation where the Town of Saugus and the residents should be suffering because the work isn't being done or completed for different reasons. If we, if we do go forward with the extension, I think, one, we should have a site visit.
That's good.
Two, I think we actually should have it written, that is for a one-year extension, and put it actually written before we vote it. That's my personal opinion.
Were there any restrictions on the subdivision from your contract last time? All the boards are aware.
Yeah. None other than what was listed in the plans. I mean, there were, there were some areas of wetland replication, but that really didn't deal with the subdivision. The drainage was dealt with in the micro pool area at the base of the subdivision, and that flows into the wetlands. But they're really, and I may be wrong, I don't want to speak out of turn here, Mr. Finocchio's here also, but I don't believe there was any restrictions other than what was included on the subdivision.
Was there really Hillside Prediction Act?
There was not. Hillside Prediction.
Not at that time.
Did not. Come in.
I'm not sure, and I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. I'm not sure, and I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, if I missed it and it was said already, but what was the conclusion with the, for the DPW to inspect all the pipes and drain and everything?
That was the last time I was out. Todd, who was the chief engineer at the time for the town's lawyers, requested that the utilities be inspected before they were closed up. They were closed up, and DPW was never called. So he wants them dug up so that they can be inspected, but he's no longer with us, Larry is. So they could have a record.
Mr. Chair, Larry Durkin, Town Engineer, I think, you know, I need to have this conversation with the DPW director. I think the things that, to verify, I think a pressure test can be done without digging the pipe up. We can see if it passes for pressure testing. And really, the time for disinfecting, you know, before the system goes online, that's, you know, before it's going to be, the water's going to be consumed, that's the time when the water should, the water main should be disinfected again and tested again. It's been sitting for years, and there's no way that water is in an acceptable condition. So it would have to be, I would recommend, I'll discuss it with the DPW, and I can give a better opinion when we next meet. But, you know, it should be pressure tested if the results aren't there, and the time to test it is before the water's going to get used for disinfection results, for bacteria testing.
Did you want to say something? Mr. Tucci, come to the podium.
John Tucci. So I don't think, Todd wasn't around when we put the water in sewer in at the time.
Todd had requested, Todd Baldwin. I was at that site.
Yeah, but no, no, when we installed the water and sewer lines.
Correct, but he said there was no record of it being inspected?
Well, we did have DPW out there taking a look at the water lines, and they were out there.
I think Larry has come up with the best idea.
Yeah.
It's been sitting a long time.
Yeah.
I don't know where it was shut off, when it was turned on.
Yeah, we did have it pressure tested once, and it was drained because we couldn't chlorinate it from the other side of Essex Street, so...
Mr. Chair, since it was a public hearing, and it looks like there's some neighbors here, did anybody want to come and speak?
Please state your name when you come to the podium.
Rosie Ann Mar, 25th Gav, and I wanted to know when the Japanese knotweed was going to be addressed. It's taking over the wetlands and the conservation land and getting into the houses, my house, the backyard and our house, and our neighbors', which is the one on Wilbur Ave. And it's very invasive, and you can't, we spend hundreds of dollars trying to get rid of it. And if you come to our house now, you'll see all the tarps and the chemicals and everything that we've done to try to suppress it, eliminate it, keep it from spreading. And it is, it is just destroying everything. And it causes a problem if we were ever to sell our home. That's something that we would have to address, and they wouldn't necessarily want to buy the house because you can't, it's very difficult to get rid of. It started with the fill, the landfill that was coming in, and we saw it just taking over right after we saw the construction of the house.
I didn't hear what you said is causing that. What was it?
We've been there 24 years, and until we saw the construction going on and the landfill coming in, it just like took over, whatever.
What took over? I didn't hear the words.
The Japanese knotweed.
Japanese knotweed?
Yeah.
Japanese bamboo.
Yeah, it's just out of control.
You have pictures?
It's my husband, Robert Mar.
This is some information. This stuff is very invasive.
Yeah, it is. It's very invasive, and we don't know how else to get rid of it, but we know that it's coming.
My other neighbors brought it up.
It's encroaching on the properties now.
I got two.
Okay. I thought we were supposed to tell you everything I've got down there.
We just have, it was mentioned in previous meetings about trying to get it addressed, and I was just wondering if there was any further plans.
So this is the first time we've heard about it? Because this is a new board. I don't know if you were...
Yeah.
So that's why I wanted just to read what it is, and I'm sorry that you...
No, that's okay. I mean, we're just trying to stop it from getting any further into the lands.
So a question I have, have you been to the Conservation Commission meetings and reported this to them?
I think that's, when we came and first mentioned it, it was at one of those meetings. It was at the meeting where I believe that Conservation...
This was a few years back?
Yeah.
A few years ago, for no recent meetings?
Yeah, no, no recent meetings.
So when is the DEP aware of this? Has this been addressed in any...
DEP is aware of it, and it is a management problem. It needs mowing, and one of the primary areas where we have problems with Japanese knotweed is the shoulder of the road and the detention basin. They need to be regularly mowed. There is simply no other way to control this stuff.
But we haven't done that?
We haven't done that.
The public hasn't done that?
Very much. It's impossible to do it because the road's under construction. You'd be mowing blocks, basically.
So do you believe this came in with some of the fill?
It definitely exacerbated the thing because it's going even across the streets and on both sides of the Berthold Drive, and we're seeing it in the conservation lands. And it's getting, it's getting further from where, I mean, we never had it initially on our yard. And it just seemed like every time, you know, when they started cutting down things and filling the landfill, that's when it seemed to just start sprouting out of control. We've been addressing it for a couple of years now. Even they were saying the roundup. I mean, we've gotten the strongest roundup, that's specifically for that weed, and it's...
I know what that is. I have that.
It's not...
It's widespread.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, we have it at the end of our street in those little huts. Oh, it is terrible.
Yeah, it's crazy, but we're, we just wanted to bring it up again when we're talking about...
I wonder if goats eat it?
I know at one point, De Rosa Environmental had a contract with the zoo, and they were feeding the stuff to giraffes. I don't think the giraffes would be particularly happy with the roundup.
I don't think they rent giraffes, but they do rent goats. Wow.
They'll eat everything.
Yeah, I wonder if a goat would eat it? Because in Georgetown, they have a place that they, yeah, they rent them. You can bring them down, and they put a big pen, and they click, like poison ivy. They love poison ivy. I wonder if goats eat it when they look at it.
It is manageable. It can be mowed, and if it's mowed regularly. The problem is, of course, that it's a wetland indicator, and if it retreats into the wetland, then the Conservation Commission catches you mowing it, now you've got another regulatory problem.
But it generally won't grow in wetlands.
It won't grow in wetlands. It grows very close to the wetlands, and we have 25-foot no disturbance zones now. That's where it goes to hide.
I'm just reading to see if the goats can eat it. Japanese knotweed can be safely eaten by sheep, cattle, horses, and goats. To destroy Japanese knotweed on the site, hiring goats will clear out the invasion by eating the plant to the ground. This would be the first phase of the project. The next phase is then you must dig up and remove the roots as much as possible. Just wondered if that's something you could look into maybe as a good neighbor. There were some goats. No, buy it, just rent it. Because then what are you going to do with it afterwards? Don't drop it off at my house.
They're good pets.
Yeah, they are good pets, but I have enough good pets right now.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak? Can you state your name?
Mary, excuse me, Mary Barlow.
What's her phone number?
Mary Barlow, 39 Wilbur Ave. I border the wetlands, so that's how I come into it. And I thought it was like about five years ago that this was, taking care of this knotweed was going to be one of the things that they were going to be doing on a regular basis, that it came up, and at that point, they said, we'll take care of it so that it doesn't spread. And it wasn't taken care of. It's gone down, so it's, where Bobby and Rosie and, as I'm across the street, and I still have it now bordering my land, it managed to cross the one street in front of, what's the street that you're on, technically?
Fisk.
Fisk. It went across Fisk, so it's on the corner of the building of the property there, and I can just see it moving up the street. I mean, it's just going to keep on going unless somebody just stops it and says, okay, this is how to handle it, or we don't want to poison the whole, everything.
One thing about that stuff is it does pull out easy. The roots are pretty easy to pull out.
It's comparatively easy to manage, but it has to be managed on a widespread basis. It's wind distributed.
Would it be, would it be possible to hire like a landscaper to come out and pull them? Would you be willing to do that as a good neighbor? Because that is a nuisance, and I think you do have to pull it from the ground. But I've pulled them out before. Now that I'm looking at the picture, that is what's at the end of our street, and they pull out pretty easy. I know they're pretty oval.
I'm sorry, we're having a little discussion here. It all comes down to subdivision approval. We cannot work on the site until we have some...
So if you had subdivision approval and your extension was granted, would you be willing to, as a condition of that, hire a landscaper to come out and pull all those? Probably sooner than later because they're only going to multiply. The weather's going to get warmer and...
Five guys will get them all.
And that won't, that doesn't, a mower, it brings grass and all that.
You can't mow it. And plus, then the roots are still there, so they're just going to come back. But if you pull them up, and it is wet, fairly wet, so they pull even easier?
Yes.
So Bob?
Before we do anything, I'd really like to have a site visit there and take a look at what this wetlands issue, the roadway itself, just the whole things we're having pushing my mind as to how it looks. Like I said, having gone over to Wilbur a number of times in past years, it's a mess over there, and you don't want to stay that way. So the best thing we need to get it actually constructed, which I'd like to see done since the damage has already been done. But on the other hand, to giving him an approval right now of anything more than a year's time, so they can collect all the approvals and everything else that they need, along with the bond and all that, the termination of the bond date and all that stuff, I think we need to have that in hand before we go through an extension. There's no reason why this, to my point of view anyway, why this is dragged on like it has. And I can see the problems the state and everything else. That should have been cleaned up. This has been approved 2015, so I mean, this is 2004.
Then we had COVID.
Yeah, we had...
But I'm just saying, for the state, that ties the state up. I mean, you know what I mean? I don't, I don't know.
So if we call it a public hearing, that would be, the motion I would make is to have a site visit before approving the request for the extension, so that we can really see what's going on.
So you're saying continue this to our next meeting, go out, have a site visit, and then if, in case we can grant the extension, but with, you might want to add different conditions or something?
They know exactly what you're looking for.
I mean, can you put conditions on an extension?
Can you put conditions?
Yeah.
This is brand new. This is expired, it's gone by, so this is, this really should be a brand new submission.
We know, they know exactly what you're looking for, what we're looking for.
Am I right, Chris?
This plant issue was obviously something...
This would have to be a brand new submission. It's not...
You could deny the request for an extension, and they would have to refile with a new submission, even several years after the fact. Extension requests are common, there's a variety of reasons why a project being...
Because of the issues involved.
There's several issues involved, but procedurally, if your options are, you can deny, and that would require a new filing, or you could extend to get the project moving, which isn't everybody's interest, but there's all these issues of, they haven't been working because they don't have a valid permit, but it sounds like they've been working out there with that one.
So can you add conditions to a...
Usually with an extension request, the conditions relate only to schedule, but the board can reopen a subdivision approval at any time if they feel like there's new information and additional conditions need to be added. I checked with Town Counsel on that, but that's been my experience, that board has that authority to do so.
Well, this is new information because these plants are a nuisance, so I would see that, I think that would qualify.
Again, I would suggest we have a site visit. They know, I think if they're listening tonight, what we're looking for. And we know that we want to put them on a relatively short span of time for the extension to see whether or not they're going to get, you know, they're working here.
Sounds like their hands are tied, though, with the conservation stuff, right?
Well, that's what I would like to, I'd like to check.
Let me ask you this.
As they make the decision for the board.
The board way in, which is a major...
I just want to see if everything that we got in today at the 24th hour, this is the end of it?
Sure. You know, the issues...
I'll refer, one second, to our General Counsel. Should this go back for, where it's been out there so long, Jesse, should this go back, be denied and go back for re-submission?
Well, I can't, I can't tell the board what you should or shouldn't vote for, but I can tell you is that your local subdivision rules, the provision that pertains to extensions, it states that the extension request should be filed before the expiration of the subdivision. It is silent as to the question of whether an application that's before you now, after the subdivision has technically expired, whether you're allowed to reopen. It doesn't say one way or the other.
So I would just say, in doing that, what do we gain? It just prolongs the inevitable, and then the neighbors who have to look at this mess, it just continues that.
There is a hold on the development. I think there's a hold on this, those folks that live up there, seeing a dirt street that's been there for a number of years now, can that street be worked on, can the sidewalks be worked on, something that leads into it, so at least from the street at the beginning of Berthold, so people can look at it and see something that they can smooth up, the neighbors can smooth out their yards, you know, and get that part of it straightened out.
None of that can happen without the extension. None of that can happen without the extension.
I'm saying, no. What I'm saying is, I didn't say not to do that without an extension. I'm saying that, first of all, I think a site visit is required, and secondly, if we give them an extension, even other departments, other groups have a hold on this property, but does that prohibit them from...
The Conservation does. It says in this letter from the Conservation that they can't do anything, any roadwork until the Conservation, those two conditions are met.
Right, but looking at what they've given us on the maps here, it doesn't look like the wetlands itself influences the roadway up to the cul-de-sac.
I don't know, that's not what she wrote in here. But that's not what the clerk for the Conservation wrote, but I don't know.
I think a site visit's in order.
I do believe we need a site visit, so we're all on the same page.
So do we want to make a motion to continue this to our next meeting and then schedule a site visit?
I know that a site visit's wanted, but until we have this approval for an extended, for this extension, we can't go to the Conservation Commission and get the relief we need so that we can get out there with five people and clear out these bamboo. My concern is... My concern is, is that we're gonna be here at the next month meeting. If it is this bamboo, it's gonna have taken hold. It's, it's springtime, that is the most fertile dirt I've ever seen. It's, it's, it's gonna go crazy. I mean, there is an opportunity here to keep it moving forward. There are an awful lot of other entities, namely the conservation commission, that isn't gonna let anything happen without a watchful eye. And if the concerns are wetland-based and, and issues with this Japanese bamboo-based, I, I would suggest that that's already being watched over and being taken care of by the conservation commission and to a lesser extent by the D P.
This was approved in 2015.
I understand that, Mr. Wolf.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
So what you're saying is suddenly we're in a hurry. You're in a hurry. Where in hell have they been for the last eight years?
We were here two years ago and there was, just over two years ago, and there was a request for certain items. One was the...
We're building four lots.
Yes, and a 300 foot, a 300-foot road.
Oh, the roadway's nothing more than a driveway.
A, a little bit more. It, it's 40-foot wide, it's got a sidewalk on one side.
The 50-foot that's, you know, there's only, they gave you a waiver on that?
The, the roadway that needs to be constructed, it's a significant roadway. It's, it's not a 20-foot wide driveway, as, as one might suspect. That's all I'm saying, it's...
Typically require 50, 8 feet, 8 feet. So much of it was paved and plantings on this, between the sidewalk and the roadway.
And that's all included on the plan, the, the plan that was proposed and allowed back in 2015 as recorded?
So where is the, maybe I shouldn't even ask you this, but I don't see a, and having a site visit and having it back on our next agenda while we decide whether or not we're gonna go forward with the extension.
Let me see when our next meeting is.
Is everyone in the audience that wanted to get up and speak, got up to speak?
Name's Bob Ma, 25th CAV. I've been dealing with Mr. Tucci and his attorney since 2011. He built the house next to my house. Danny, I thought, but the, the road was a paper street. They raised it up for eight blocks. They brought in Phil, back and forth. They say they're not working now. I see dump trucks going in and out, in and out. My kitchen window's right here. I know what they're doing. The reason this job isn't done is because they cut corners and they screw up. They have their machines in the wetlands. They're supposed to put up hay and the fence. They only do that when you guys tell them. You know? This Japanese ragweed has gotten worse. They built that wall. Now it pushes all that, they can't grow up on that land. Now it's pushing it over here because now you got water coming out of the wall. And that stuff loves water. Now it's migrating over to my property. You know, how are they gonna sell these houses? They're gonna tell these people this soil has, is Japanese wagweed, or knotweed. There's lawsuits all over the place about this. I want Mr. Tucci to finish his project, I'm tired of it. Didn't work this week because they knew they were coming here. Week before, bang, 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 his father's out there all the time. They're pulling dirt out. Unloading equipment, picking up equipment, working on equipment. You know? This invasion stuff is getting bad. And Roundup ain't doing it. I've pulled it up. You, the roots run underground. They go like this all over, like spiders. You can pull it up, it's just gonna come back because it's gonna be maintained. Now who's gonna, they own the wetlands, right? Where they have all the water spilling and all the ragweed, they own it. Who's maintaining it? They're saying wetlands, I'm not doing any work. But what are they gonna do? Who's gonna maintain that after they sell their houses? There should be a stipulation on this, that this has to be taken care of.
Just, just you understand, this board doesn't...
Oh, I understand that, I'm just...
You're listening to your concerns.
I, I appreciate that. You know, we've talked to Frank. Frank's kept a good eye on, you know, conservation. But the reason this project's like this is because they try to cut corners. They're getting shut down by the D P A for having the equipment in there and everything else. I got pictures. So, you know, they built the house right next to me. I seen them bury tires, I seen them bury oil tanks. Thank you for listening to me, all of you. I want them to finish this job, but I don't want to have to keep wasting my time killing their stuff coming onto my land. And then it'll take over my land and then my house ain't worth crap. And then I have to get a lawyer again and then sue them.
I'm sorry.
I don't want to do that.
I'm sorry that you're going through that.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to continue the public hearing and to have a site visit, not for our next meeting, but the following, by the following one. So that we're not defining ourselves short. So in other words, if we have a meeting, we have a quorum next time around, so, you know. At least if we give ourselves two meetings, which is, what, the second meeting in April?
April 4th and 21st. No, 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 I'm in the wrong month. 4th and 18th.
April 18th?
So I'd move to continue the hearing and have a site visit.
So you've made a motion?
Continue to the 18th.
Are you making the motion, Mr. Wolf?
Right.
Can we get a second to that motion?
Mr. Chair, may I?
Sure.
Throw you to the board, recommend an addition to that motion, which is the bond for this project, the planning board bond under subdivision control should be reauthorized. It should be reviewed, updated and reauthorized. Whatever it is.
By the next meeting?
But isn't that part of...
Or by the...
By the 18th. By the 18th.
By the 18th.
Isn't that really part of the approval for extending the plan? Having the subdivision?
The bond?
Are you asking for a one-month extension on the bond?
No, I'm asking for a reauthorization.
He's asking for the one-year extension.
Review of the existing bond, a reauthorization and any adjustments that are needed.
So we don't know what we're going to do until we go to the site.
Until we have a site view, I agree with you.
So if the, if the, is the bond still in place that you currently, that you've added?
We have a new bond.
Do you have a new bond?
We've, we requested and subject to this board's approval, that will be issued.
For 200,000?
For 200,000.
Planning board needs to see...
The bond and please...
The bond and there's usually, you know, from engineering, the engineering consultant, a review of all the bond items. And the planning board needs to see that review and get a recommendation from the town engineer to approve that.
Mr. Dragan?
Just be presented all the information, so I can examine it.
Again, Mr. Chair, I don't like the bond and extending the bond to imply that we're extending the time limit on the, on the subject. So the bond has already, the prior bond has already left, is that right?
I, I believe no bond had ever issued because we never got to the binder code. We never got to the point of requesting lots to be released.
There's no bond right now.
Correct.
So I'm thinking, my, my motion would be to extend the public hearing and to the second meeting of, of April and for us to vote on when we could have a site visit before we conclude and extend the subdivision itself. I do agree that work should be done and should be completed. We have a neighbor up here, this is a mess and it's been a mess for a long time. But I think we need to visit it and I think we need to make a determination. In the meantime, I think that the applicant should be going forward and clearing up all the holes on the land that you currently have. Now, conservation, you're saying conservation is holding up their approval for something that they require from us?
Until there's an active subdivision, until the subdivision is extended and we're, we're in a state of non-expired, which right now we're expired, the subdivision. We can't file anything with the conservation commission. We can't file a notice of intent, we can't, can't take the steps we need.
She, they, they didn't mention that here. She mentioned these conditions. She didn't say that they were be, that they're, you're being held up on conservation issues, anything depending on extension. She gave me a list of stuff.
If I could offer something here. This is a, this is a common situation with small subdivisions. You get an order of conditions for each house lot. You get an order of conditions for the road. This road crosses a wetland, but we had to get permission from the conservation commission in order to repair the wall. We had to get permission from the commission just to work on the road. That permission is valid and allows us to go in, clean up the site. That's why the material is being removed from the site on a regular basis.
Is it actually being removed?
Let me stop the, right there.
Sure.
You have an order that allows you, under an emergency decree, to go in and clean the site up?
To maintain the road.
Why can't we take the, the invasive species of Japanese?
Because they're not in the road. There's a very small section of the road that has Japanese knotweed in it. The Japanese knotweed is in attention base.
Could you apply to the wetlands commission for an emergency decree?
Not for that.
You can't?
No. We need, we need to be able to proceed with the subdivision. Right now, we're not allowed to work on either one of the house lots. We're only allowed to work on the roadway itself.
You just told us you're removing dirt from, from, from the subdivision.
That, that's a special agreement with the conservation commission because there was dumping there. There had been tires and hardware left on the subdivision.
We need a site visit, that's what this has come down to. You, you just stated one thing and then you said something else, sir.
That was not my intent.
Okay, you said that you were just, you were cleaning up the lots.
Yes.
And that's not the road.
We are not developing the lots, we can't develop the lots.
Well, you're, you're still doing work, so.
And we've been asked to do that.
You said, you just told the board that only on the bridge can you do the work.
The conservation commission has still to be on the site.
What I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna ask for a motion that we have a site visit? We close, close this portion?
Continue?
We continue, I'm sorry, the public hearing? Then that we take a motion?
Mr. Chair, just that April vacation is April 18th and I'll be unavailable. Would it be possible to do the site visit sooner so that we can make the April 4th meeting?
We don't know.
What I was just gonna ask, since we're all meeting tomorrow, to do a site visit at 8:60, could we go after 8:60? I love you guys, but I don't know if I want to spend like, you know, two separate field trip days with you. If we're already meeting on Friday, could we, after 8:60? Or we could even start here and then go up to 8:60?
You're talking about a happy wife, happy life, right?
She can come. I know she likes to tag along and she can bring her sisters if she wants to.
Yeah, you don't want them.
Just have to leave them in the car. No offense, Carol. But we could do both tomorrow, if everybody, if time allows.
I'm, I'm at work.
Richie, you're never gonna make it.
I'll make it.
Love you, but you're never gonna make it.
Nope.
You can do both?
Sure. Well, we hope the hell I'm gonna be at 8:60.
Well, it's my only afternoon off, so don't, I'm off later and I'm being there all damn day. I can tell you that. But why don't we say if time allows, then we'll try to do both? If it doesn't, then we could do the other one the following Friday.
That's what I'm saying, you must...
And, and you have to take, you have to take time off from work to do this? Do you work on Fridays? Okay, so the sake of, the one that isn't retired, we'll try to, try to squeeze them both in tomorrow. If we go at 12, this, there should be plenty of daylight to get to both.
Remember the ultimate reason they're here is to look for an extension on a project where they don't have, they're being held up by other agencies. So our site visit would be good for us. I would be talking maybe a one-year extension of the bond to cover us until they can clear the dust up on what's holding them up in other areas. The mass D P W, we need conservation.
They need to go before the board of selectmen also.
After what?
There's a request, if I'm reading this properly, that you need to go before the board of selectmen.
Really?
Yeah, I was, I was unclear with that.
What's that all about?
It said for the deed restriction, right?
Oh, for the approval of the deed restriction. If, if D E P allows us to go that route, the D E P would first approve the language of the deed restriction and then the, it would, it would go to the board of selectmen for signature of the deed restriction. However, D E P still is asking for the water quality. Yes, I can't record it without the signature.
Well, we don't know what the D E P is asking yet, so.
They're, they're asking for the water quality is the issue, so. And that's something, Mr. Dixon, do you know?
Yeah, we have the D E P stuff right here.
Is that water quality? Like I said, I haven't even seen this.
That came late today, so I skipped.
Well, this'll, this'll be some interesting reading between now and the next meeting.
Mr. Chair, if you were to do the site visit tomorrow, does that mean this would be on the agenda for the fourth?
Well, it's...
Five?
It's up to the board.
Is he, what time, is he 8:60 site visit?
12.
12, right?
12, I mean, we, we could go, we could... Yeah, we could switch.
You gotta go over to this one. Yes, we could, but we don't know the exact time to be over there.
We don't have to give an exact... Well, I don't have to give an exact time to anybody, do we?
Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute. On a site visit, the neighbors themselves have the opportunity, because it's a majority of us would be there. The neighbors themselves have the opportunity to be there with us. Not so much participating, but to be there to see what we're doing.
You are correct.
Are you guys around Friday afternoon?
Yeah, we'll be there.
Somewhere in the afternoon?
Between 1:30 and 2 o'clock.
You can keep an eye out the kitchen window for us? And then buzz the neighbors? I mean, I don't know, I, I don't, I'm just saying.
And just give you time on Friday afternoon.
So if we go to the other one at 12, I would say, in the area of two would be enough time?
Two's fine.
Two?
We'll have the chain down by 1 o'clock and leave it open till, is that fine? That's blocking the road so that you can access the drive down there.
Will someone from the property meet us there? Should we have questions?
Yes, John will be there.
So that's the motion, right, to continue it?
So that's the motion that we have on the table right now? I'm sorry, Mr. Riley?
Preparation of a bond for review and approval by the board.
By the next meeting?
That's sort of practical, yeah.
It sounds like they've already started the process of the bond, correct?
Yes.
That's what the letter from Doherty says.
Whose bond is it? Where did that come from? Bonds aren't approved through process, the applicant controls. They're presented to the board after town engineer reviews.
We have the preliminary approval, we have the preliminary approval from A A Doherty, from the bond company, that they're willing to write it, yes. And then from there, it needs to get vetted.
Yeah, it's often a preliminary conditional, so it's not...
Such a pre-approval letter.
So it may, the bond amount may be more, is likely to be more than that, but I guess that's just authorization.
Gotta crawl before we can walk.
Get the bond.
Yes.
What would you typically recommend for the amount?
Usually what happens is engineering or the D P W looks at the plans and then comes up with an estimate to complete the project in full. And then amounts are released and its performance is provided. Planning board reviews that. But, so it's a, it's an amount to complete the whole project that the town has to take the project over. And then line items are deducted.
Yes.
In bond releases, that's the usual process.
And that's where the 200,000 estimate came from.
Yeah, and that, so that will need to be probably, it depends on town engineering consultant review.
Motion to draw.
Bond amounts.
You want to withdraw your, your motion?
Withdraw your motion and then re-motion.
Must be the re-motion, the new motion?
To include.
To include, to include the board.
Would you state the motion?
Continuance for any site visit to be conducted.
On Sunday, Friday, 2 o'clock.
Yeah.
What's today, whatever it is?
It's due to April 4th.
Preparation of a proper bond by the applicant for review and approval
Preparation of a proper bond by the applicant for review and approval by the town engineering consultant, town council, lady.
Okay. And continuing this to.
April 4th.
Next April meeting?
April 4th.
Second meeting, which one?
April 4th. It's March 21st, that gives us like.
And they do all that?
I don't know if it's April.
I mean.
Actually, I'll be waiting on the last meeting.
Won't be here the 18th? Sorry, so the April 4th? What? What's your name? John.
Don't be late for supper.
John won't be here for the 18th as well as the attorney. So we'll go for the 4th. If for some reason we're not ready and we don't have our ducks in a row, then we can open it and continue it to another meeting. But I think we should be able to do that.
Assuming that the, I'm a 4th, assuming that the site visit goes well and that they will have a bond prepared initially for a one-year bond, right?
For performance of the approved subdivision.
My point is that we're now getting, this is going on so long, the neighbors up there are not really happy, they've been suffering through this now for a number of years. It's time to either complete the project or plant trees there.
And so with the extension, you can motion that they have a year and they should complete everything within a year?
As soon as you give us the green light, we'll be moving forward to getting this done. The financing's in place, the people are in place. It's time to get it done, but we need to get the approvals to do so.
So that's what we'll do. Site visit tomorrow at 2:00, coming back on the 4th. We'll have a bond prepared to the town sagas. What did we say the figure would be?
We'll work with.
The DEW has to determine that.
They can't have a bond unless they have a number. You got 280.
An estimate at least in process for completion of the entire subdivision.
The bond is.
Unless there is existing worth, I would say the whole subdivision. Properly complete the whole subdivision because it's not in the, I think, identifiable.
But we don't know if that completion cost.
Existing condition.
Once we get to the number, we can back in from that. I mean, that number can come from your office, from your office. We'll get there.
Second motion?
One suggested me, they provide a cost, their estimated cost of completion and I can review that.
We'll get that over to you by Monday morning.
That's what I did with Paul, our surveyor. We did the estimated cost and we got pricing. That's where we came up with the 200,000.
280?
Get that to him.
Yeah. You know how to reach me. You have my email?
I'll send it over to you. That's how we came up with it.
200. 200 is going to be more for that.
Well, that was the road, completion of the curving, the hardtop, the grass sidewalks.
A subdivision road generally costs $600 per linear foot.
Well, we already had the water and sewer in, so.
Okay, well, things like that.
And the drainage already in, so that's why we didn't talk about that.
So lighting in, John? All the lighting pulls are in, all the pull boxes?
I actually have a meeting with National Grid on Tuesday. We have a design, but we're meeting out there on Tuesday. But, you know, it all depends on getting approval.
John has been asking about lighting standards and I've been researching it. Chris, you did provide some useful information to John Tucci via email, so thank you for that.
I believe, maybe, correct me if I'm wrong, anyone, but the town now owns street lighting. In the town? And he took it over from National Grid? That's what I was told. So the town defined the standard. Otherwise, National Grid says this is what you need to put in.
Yes, so I looked at our rules and regs because yesterday when we had that conversation, I was confused. And it says that unless we specify particular lighting, the planning board, like say it was added to a subdivision that was already there and it had particular lanterns, like say Juniper Drive has different lanterns, we could specify that. But other than that, the lighting comes from our electrical department, our electrician.
We don't have an electrical department and I asked the electrical inspector.
No, yeah, it would be the electric inspector. I know you went back and forth with him today and you had some questions, so I got you the specs for the lighting that we do use in the town. All the retrofits that we just did for the streets. So if it's not a special lighting is what I guess I'm trying to say, is if it's not a special light that we're matching from another subdivision with, certain subdivisions have different lighting, you would just use the LeoTec's that the town has used to retrofit all of the lights.
Excellent, thank you.
So I have the specs for you. And I believe you got them yesterday from Mr. Riley, correct?
I did. And I was copied on that, so.
Same ones?
I believe so.
Okay.
LeoTec Cobra Head?
It was a document that Chris sent.
20 what?
Don't know if that's the, we'll.
We'll verify that. Yeah, we'll verify that. Thank you, maybe I'll take.
And I was confused yesterday because when you came in yesterday, I thought you were talking about the poles, which kind of poles? You might ask what polls and it was just in the specs, it just says.
Polls and lights.
Yeah, like. So, okay.
Will the motion be put through?
Once again, we're gonna make a motion?
For the sake of clarity, what is the motion to continue?
Okay, can I just specify one more thing? Once Mr. Long starts making his motion, we can no longer talk, so.
To continue the public hearing pending the site visit of the Friday, whatever the date, that is what, 21st, Wednesday, at 2:00?
Well, we're continuing it regardless. It's not pending the site approval.
Yeah, I know, but also within that, that the, that continue public hearing, we're asking that they come forward with a bond in about, what'd you say, 200,000 or?
For town review and approval.
No, I mean, how much is the money?
Just, I want you to use that word.
They're gonna work that up.
That was worked out.
Here's an easier way. So moved to what Mr. Riley just said. I second it. Take the vote.
Take a vote. All favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes five to zero. To the neighbors, there will be a site visit between 1:30 and 2:00 tomorrow. Those are wish to attend.
Can I ask one thing?
Sure.
This is all great and everything, site visiting and everything else, they're getting it for their health, but how am I gonna get relief? Is a conservation guy coming with you tomorrow on a site visit?
It's not up to this board to notify. It'd be up to the, to the abbotists to notify Conservation.
Okay, that's all I need because those are site visits and bonds and everything. Doesn't stop the Japanese knotweed from coming onto my property.
He did agree that if, once he gets his approvals, if he gets his approvals, that he will send some guys out there.
Would that be a condition?
That'll be a condition on the property.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
We're not gonna forget about the knotweed.
Thank you. Did you want one of these back?
Sure.
Which was your, you had one.
Close this.
No, you don't close it. We just continued it. Oh, yeah, now we're next on the agenda. Good night, everybody.
Good night, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Good night.
The broom's a plan. Let's go.
I handed it over, sorry. No, she put that. Can give you. Yeah. Yeah. I just handed it over.
Do you have any other questions by the board?
The contractor.
We have the A and R next.
I'm not on the. Yeah. We have knotweed on front.
Sorry. That's right. Thank you. It's all I want to get here. Next, on the agenda, we have an A and R for 225, 235 Walnut Street.
Mr. Chair, could I ask counsel, special counsel, Mr. Schumer to come up to the podium and speak on this?
Is there an applicant representative of that property?
Yeah, probably for me.
We'll call you up. Thank you, sir.
So for the record, Attorney Jesse Schumer, special town council. Just to be clear, this is not a public hearing, it's just a public meeting.
Okay.
So this, the board has received an application for endorsement of approval not required plan for property located at 223 and 225 Walnut Street. The town has asked me to take a look at the application, which I had done today. And essentially what the plan is seeking to do is to carve up two parcels of land that are located off of, what's the name of this street there?
Hawks Hill Lane.
Hawks Hill, yeah. So similar to the project that you just were hearing about, this is an expired subdivision. This is a subdivision that was created almost 20 years ago and was not constructed within the three-year time period and it was never extended as far as the materials that I've received. So based on that, there's no approved subdivision road for them to create frontage for these lots that they're purporting to create. So based on that, my recommendation to the board would be that the plan that was presented does not meet the qualifications for approval not required endorsement. In addition, there's a couple of other issues that I wanted to bring to the board's attention with this plan and with this site. And you may wanna, it's not typical to have a site view for an approval not required plan, but it may be something that you would be called upon to do at some point in the future because the denial of endorsement sends the developer to come back with a subdivision plan to create the road and the lots that they're looking to do. So that may be before you in the near future. But the issues, the other issues that came to my attention with the plan is first, the previous subdivision that has now expired, it was granted pursuant to the terms of a covenant, which provided that there be no further subdivisions of land. So what they're attempting to do here is to essentially do what the covenant, which is on record, forbade them to do. The additional issue, which I believe was something that Mr. Long had brought to the town's attention, is that one of the parcels that the developers is looking to add on to the front parcel here, I believe the 225 Walnut Lot. Adding that parcel to that front parcel to create sufficient lot area would create a violation of your local rule 4I, which is, it's essentially, it's a rule of your local subdivision rules that prohibits these kind of long tails of land that really have no buildable function and are just to create lot area that's separated from the buildable portion of the lot. So that's something for you to be mindful of if and when the developer comes back with a subdivision plan. Additionally, I'll stop there.
Thank you, Mr. Schumer.
Thank you, sir. So.
If I, Mr. Chair, I may add from my engineer's report, similar, you know, not the detail of special counsel Schumer, but I think I sent an email to the applicant's engineer and I said the A and R plan does, you know, it basically does not conform with the subdivision rules or regulations for the A and R plan. So I agree with special counsel Schumer. Another issue that special counsel Schumer didn't bring up is there's the existing shed barn. The structure height is three stories with a height over 20 feet and therefore it's not an accessory building. So I don't think the minimum lot setbacks on the A and R plan are correct. And the third item is, I'm in agreement with special counsel Schumer, it's section, I got a picture of it, it's section 4A and it's specifically on irregular shaped lots. And what it says is that little triangle on the subdivision plan that is shown as lot 3B doesn't count towards the proposed configuration of, you know, combined of 3A and 3B.
I think that's what, to whom Schumer.
No, and I agree with that. That's a little fine.
So we're in agreement with that as well?
Yeah.
That's, just to be clear, that's not an issue for you to deal with on an A and R endorsement, but it would be if it were a subdivision plan. For A and R endorsement, you're really only looking at frontage and access on specific kind of ways.
So this doesn't change, if I'm correct, just taking, coming a little bit out of my swing, lady? They're in the process of building a house on that lot.
So as Larry noted, there is an existing house there, it appears. The plan shows a shed. My understanding is that it's a two-story house and perhaps the applicant can shed some light on what the.
These are, there's eight photos here of all sides of that existing structure.
Is that a new building?
Fabio, is it new? Mike, you might want to introduce yourself.
It looks like it's been there a while.
It's, because I think the idea is going to completely, completely directions here. I think you guys.
You have pictures of the dwelling?
This is the barn, the shed. I emailed this to, some of the, well, I have two of these, I can pass the other around. Can you, I can let you see it.
And the height on that, that's two stories. What's the height on that, 26?
Over 26 feet.
Yes, it is.
So it doesn't, it doesn't, it's just a dwelling.
Does this have water to it, a water service to it?
I don't know. There's a water. It has a disconnected water line.
So there is a water line to it, but it's disconnected?
That's on photo seven. If you look at.
There is no water to that land at all.
Hold on one second. One second. We're trying to get a little control. I'd like the applicant to approach, so that he may answer any questions that the board may have.
This is it?
Yeah, that's where it is. Yeah, so my name is Fabio, Fabio Correa. I'm the owner of 225, the contractor as well. And we are developing 225 right now, which it's me and my father, we own the property together. So all the subdivisions were approved with no denied. I got a permit to build 223, which is on the back lot, the White House. And I just got approved about probably, I would say, six months ago for the construction of a 225. There were existing houses over there that Team Hawks.
Who approved that?
Who? Yeah, we got approved by the town, town engineer, everybody. So, yeah, the situation there is, so the back land of 223. Yes. On my land, the shed belongs to 225, the front lot, where the house has been built in right now. So, and sagas require 20,000 square feet for a single-family lot. We have probably 22, 500 something, we work it out with engineer. The only idea is, the shed was something that was permitted to Team Hawks to build that or whatever it was. It's an existing thing, just a shed for storage. The only thing I wanted is, as I own both property, instead of get the shed on 225, I want the shed on 123. That's it. I'm not doing any development. I still use it as a shed.
It doesn't, it doesn't, if you do that, it's not, the A and R will not, will not accept it because the lot line's now changed from it's not an accessory building. It's now a shed, a shed that has water, which could be something that's used.
No, no, that's no water. There's no water, there's no sewer, there's no nothing.
Our engineer has discovered a water line that.
Over there? No, there's no water there.
It looks like a water line, it's disconnected.
No, no, that never disconnected.
It's still water.
I did the whole.
It'd be connected back.
I did the whole development. The only thing that Team Hawks, which was the owner of the property, had it over there, was a two tanks of propane gas on the back of the shed running a line outside for a heater, a ceiling heater. That it's not even connected anymore. Yeah, he used to do a, I think he used to work on those Oregon pipes. So he was using a lot, the shed, that's right. The shed is cold, there's no insulation, there's no nothing over there. It's just like a clear cedar shed with two-by-fours inside, no insulation. The floors are kind of pretty banged out already. It's something that to be used it as a shed, a regular shed on these days.
Let me interrupt you for one second. Based on the bylaws of the town, what you are trying to move the property to keep the shed, that angle that you've added in the back is not acceptable by the rules and regulations of the town. Therefore, right now, you have, if you try to do that, you don't have enough square footage to build the house up front. You have an undersized lot which.
You're talking about because of the little angle?
This is not a lot of particle land that you could gain.
Okay.
We can't accept that.
I, I didn't know that.
Yes.
I worked it out...
This is the rules and regulations.
Yeah, I worked it out with, with the engineer, who is, which was Anthony...
Defecating.
Yeah, so I think he's no longer working over there anymore, I just found out. I just got a new copies with Peter.
Yeah.
Because I, I was with Nancy, she, so I kind of applied again because as far as I, I got the email was saying that the, the shed was not approved because there was a, uh, a mispayment of a tax on the property. So which, when we found out, she sent me the, the email, we paid next day because my father, it's an old guy, so he kind of forget, he's the only one that gets the, the papers over there. We have the, the, we put a, soon, since we demolished the, the old house that was there, that Jim used to live in the house. Uh, so we put a, a little mailbox on the street to get the mails. We never get, we never got the, 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 the tax. So that, that was the, the, the misinstinct. Soon as we find out, next day, we went to the city, we paid off, and I'll be, I'll be very honest with you, I, I, I wish I could get the shed, if I cannot get, it's still part of the other property. I'm gonna see with, with the town if, how far I can go with the renovation because it's kind of a eyesore. It's, it's a nice shed on a size, but it's a eyesore between millions of dollar construction.
Compared to what you built there.
Yeah, between, between, between both houses, but that's why we just, the only thing we wanted is, the idea for the shed, to be honest with you, is we're gonna kind of get it approved, of course. No, I'm not even talking about these meetings, I'm talking about the, the top sagas, building department, all that stuff.
So can I just interrupt for one second? I think we're glossing over the whole fact that this was an subdivision, this was filed as a subdivision, it's expired. So we're, just like the, the applicant before us, they had an expired subdivision, they have to come back before this board, it has nothing to do with other boards and committees and, or the building inspector. You have to come back to this board to file for an extension of your subdivision. And then there's the issue of the covenant that says there'll only be one lot, and then the subsidiary street, I think also states that there's only one, one lot there. So there's, this doesn't even apply according to everything we've heard. It's, it doesn't even apply, the A and R doesn't apply here, it's a subdivision. So you have to take a whole different route. So we don't even need to go into all that other stuff, right? Tonight, we're only dealing with the A and R, and I would think that we would have to vote to deny that, and then you would have to seek another avenue to try to do whatever you're gonna do.
Yeah, I, I, to be honest with you, I never did a subdivision in my life, I didn't know what was it, I just put on their hands over there so they could try to help me out. And it's, it's, even the subdivision itself, it's not a subdivision, I, I don't wanna build a separate lot over there with the setbacks. Because as far as I know, we're just changing the lines.
You can't just do that.
Yeah, yeah, no, I know, that's why I thought the setbacks for the, so on the back of the property, as, let's say that I was appropriate for the...
So he subdivided his land, that's what turned it into...
Yeah, I own both, I just wanna change lines.
That's okay.
Instead of, uh, the shed belongs to 225.
We understand what you're trying to do, but right now you're working on what they call an expired subdivision. You need to renew the subdivision to continue the work.
Yeah, I didn't know that, I gotta get some guidance on how to do that, if I can get the shed to my side. If not, I'm not gonna even like go through and...
Forget about the shed right now, you have bigger issues.
Yeah.
Through the, through the chair, if I may, just ask you a question. So did you say you own both of those lots?
Yeah.
You do, okay.
Yeah.
As, as Mr., as Mr. O'Brien and Ms. Meredith mentioned, you have an expired subdivision, so you, you need to go through the process of coming back to this board to extend your subdivision.
But for which property?
For both properties.
For both property?
To, to complete the road. You have to have the road.
No, everything is done already, the, the permit of the road was together with the, the 223 Walnut Street permit.
So you've completed the road?
Everything is done, so everything is done. Back then, I didn't even own the 225, Team Hogs is still there.
Then that's what we were on the...
It wasn't mine.
...a few years ago, but with Mr. Schumer saying, you may have put the road in, but the subdivision was expired when you did it. So you did it on the, on the, what I guess we call false pretext?
Yeah, but what I don't understand is, I went through a, a process with Dan Kelly and Michael, I know both of them. So I went through the process of a planning board, engineer, these, these, and that, I got everything approved. I spent a lot of money and time to build, so something that it's hard work, people think I'm rich, I'm not, because if you go over there right now, you see I'm doing a, a retainer wall myself, I'm kind of a framing stuff myself because saving money, it's part of the, 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 the daily basis. So I, I got everything approved. I headed the papers, the, the ones that whatever was subdivided, that I got from the, the Realtor and Team Hogs, showing whatever was 2005 or '07, something like that, was a small paper saying that the road should be built with no lights, with no sidewalks, things like that, the way to build the, 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 the road. The department asked me to even do the, the binder of the road, even before touch my land on the back, so I could have...
So when you completed the road, did you come back to the planning board and, and show them and get a sign off?
No, because no...
You filed for the subdivision and then, Nancy, is it true that they filed for the subdivision and then never came back at all? You never, they never came back before the board?
I never filed for a subdivision, me myself, I never did.
Hogs do.
If he did it, I didn't even know.
So he sells that, and then Tim left. So how does that typically work if you sell that in the middle of it? They would be then responsible?
Like, three years.
All that is voided, it's all voided.
So, as, as general counsel...
But then it expired.
Because I'm assuming for some case like that, when I got all the permits approved and everything, I should have a, a paper for the city, someone, whoever was gonna be, saying prior to do your work, you gotta get the, the subdivision approved or something like that. I, I never heard of all that, I had a, a Frank with me over there because I had a questions about how many trees could I get if I could go on the whole line. The engineer almost messed it up with me because he did a, I, I built a $120,000 wall myself.
How high is the wall?
And two other kids. It's, uh, I think 24 feet high.
24 feet?
Yeah, pretty long.
And then no special engineer?
I almo- no, I almost got, because...
That's another issue.
Do you have a permit, current permit?
No, no, I do, I have all the permits, everything's correct. Yeah, everything, I went through with, with Frank, I have everything on the paper, recorded, the conservation commission.
But the wall, the 24-foot wall would have to be...
We need a structural inspection.
Oh, no, I have everything, every...
Yeah, it'd have to be engineered by the...
Listen, I, I have no problem with, with, with the conservation, I went through, everybody's sign off on the plans in the building department.
Let's take one step backwards. Does it show a wall on the drawing that was submitted for the subdivision?
Everything, everything.
Because I never saw it.
Everything, my plans, uh, shows everything, and what I was saying, that Tony, he almost messed it up with me because I, I was new on the constructing, the, the engineer from Hayes. He draw the wall on the conservation land over the buffer zone. I was up to start, but thank God, then he called me up, he showed up and he said, hey, we should talk with Frank. Frank came and he asked, oh, we gotta bring the wall back, so otherwise you need a notice of, notice of intent. Because I was far away, my wall is not even on a conservation, it's on my property. I am inside of the 100-foot buffer zone. So I had it ever, just to let you know about the, the situation. Whatever you guys brought here, it's new to me as well, because if Team Hawk did something, I was never aware of it, not from the city, not from the, 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 the conservation department, planning board, whatever, I got approved by everybody, so I did my job accordingly. I had a foundation done, and then we got the certified block plan and bring back, I got the permit done, so I got the road done, all the inspections, house is done, it's been a year, it's not right now.
Mr. Chairman, we're going around and around on this. Our attorney said the subdivision lapsed three, after three years, which means that possibly the one, lot 1A may actually be in question too. Because if the subdivision lapsed, where does the, where does the lot line come from the back, where the, where the new house is? So it would seem to me that it's gonna file a plan, we don't really have a, a street that that has, that that house, that beautiful house in the back has front to join.
Uh, we do, everything was filed up.
No, no, you don't understand, it lasts three years after it was approved, it means it goes away.
Which the date of approval was in the...
Yeah, yeah, but...
The work wasn't done in three, within three years, we are starting.
I have all the, no, I, I, I have the papers from our planning board here, so you can see it. I have everything on file, I can go on the, on the broker that was representing Team Hawk. Uh, her name was Rachel, I think.
And another thing too, if there's, is a wall required, and if the wall is required, it should be an engineering certification.
I have everything.
As far as the construction is concerned.
I have everything, I have all the documents, all the, 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 the engineer drawings for the wall, saying how it's gonna be built, the way it needs to be built, the setbacks, the house, the size of the house, the road, everything. 225 is another story. So Team Hawk said, oh, I wanna move out, I ain't interested in buy it, so, and then me, my father and my uncle, we put it up together, we got approved by the bank, we bought the house. So as you can see, the house been sitting over there for probably three years without do nothing. And then with demolition, after with demolition, we got approved. I, I was with Larry probably six months ago getting approved the, 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 uh, 225, sewer and water with all the planes. The water, it's not even hooked up on a street, it's hooked up on my, on, on the road. Yeah?
You got approved on 3A when it was 22,000 square feet, according to the old subdivision which expired, okay? This new piece right here does not meet the standard 20,000 feet that we required. So you got a building permit on 22,000, if you go with this plan that you have right here, guess what? I'm not approving it, I don't know if anybody else would either, because we'd be approving something, we'd be approving an undersized lot.
No, no, I completely understand. Forget about the shed, I, I thought it was something easy, I, I was just willing, instead of giving that, because the house on the front, it's been constructed to be solid, I was just willing, why give the shed like this big, something that will never get approved anymore, because was approved like probably, I don't know, 20 years, 30 years ago? Why give that for free for somebody if I could help? And then I asked the, the, the engineer if I could have it, he said, let me work it out on a plan, so we're gonna do a subdivision, because everything else that you guys brought, it's something that I didn't even know. I got the, the property solid by, uh, everything was according to whatever, and I had all the papers from a, a planning board saying exactly...
Excuse me for one second, I just wanna, I just wanna talk about something for a second too. This covenant here, that, that Mr. Hawks filed, said that this would, and this would stay with the land, that only one lot was to be, to be developed on this land.
So that, that pertains to the real line?
Okay.
Yeah, the other one was already a residential building existing. The, the only thing we did it was get a permit to demolish the house, I checked it first if I could build another one, so, and then we did all the plans, we submitted everything, we got approved, and now we, we are in the middle of the construction, over there.
Why would you need a covenant on, only on that one lot? Wouldn't have been big enough for two houses anyway.
May I, I'll check and show you the old plan? So this is the subdivision here from 2005, and it's only this. There's a previous A and R plan, which created...
The drywall.
Well, it created a, a strip of land, but they didn't have the subdivision approval at that point, so that's where this lot was created here, this already existed. So the one, the, the only one lot was this, this bit here, but the covenant also said no subdivisions, so that means they can't carve off the little triangle.
Okay.
But before we can even do that, team would need to reapply...
Well, it sounds like, from what, from what the applicant is saying, it sounds like the road is completed for this one.
Okay, and that, that...
I had an inspection over there by the city to make sure that I, I headed the road done before you start any work on my, uh, backland, like backfilling or try to get in that, they were, they were like, oh, this needs to be on the binder minimum, so we don't get all the dirt or anything spread on Walnut Street. That was the, that was the first condition they gave me to start. I had everything approved already, I called in, I spoke with them, and he said, hey Fabio, the only condition you have here is, you gotta build the road first, you gotta put water, sewer, all your drywells, everything that is according to the plans, pave the whole, the, the, the road minimum with the binder, which is still there, because I didn't have money to finish my asphalt, to be honest with you, it's still there on the binder. That was the, the condition prior to touch the, the backland.
Okay, so, let's go back just a little bit. Tonight's meeting is for an A and R. We cannot approve that A and R. What happens next is something that will have to be taken up from there. So rather than assume who said what, what said who...
No, no, fine, fine, fine.
It's just best that we stay with what you brought forward, that's what this meeting is for, so...
Yeah, I will, I will just forget about it, to be honest with you, just leave a lot, whatever it's saying over there, 225 and 223, because I already got confused about 1A, 1B, 1C, because I didn't even take a look on the plans, I didn't do them.
We were, we were confused as well, so...
Yeah, so that thing got me confused. Whatever is, let's say that 223 is one way, it belongs to me, and let's say that 3B, the front one, it belongs to me, the shed is part of it, of that thing, so I will go to the city to see if can get renovated to be part of a 225, whether like a playroom, a garage from the house, or either jam, whatever, something like that, but everything else...
Do you have a piece of paper?
Huh?
Do you have a piece of paper?
If I do have a piece of paper?
Do you have a piece of paper you can write on? Write on a piece of paper that you were withdrawing the A and R application for.
Uh, I, I don't.
Inside and dated.
And I, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm shaking here, I, I thought it was gonna be seated over there, and whoever was gonna be here were gonna be maybe Peter or someone that did it, you know, I, I came just to...
That's probably the case.
I, I didn't even know what you say or how to deal with it, you know?
So I see your name, write it. You're drawing the A and R application for 225 and 223 Walnut, filed on February 7th, 2024, and dated November 16th, 2022. Inside and dated.
Uh, can you, can you repeat? So the, my...
I'll just write the part first.
Yeah, because I, I can't follow you like right now, it's not perfect.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
I apologize for all the confusion.
There's no need to apologize.
It's something that you brought that I, I didn't like, uh, told or guess something like this could happen in a meeting here, because, uh, as I'm, as I'm saying, after everything you said, it's something that I feel from any point I got betrayed it as well. So someone lied to me or someone didn't tell the, the whole truth about, of what was going on. Because I got approved about everything, so it's just like, if you, if you say, hey Fabio, can I visit your house today? And I say, yes, when you get to my door, my wife kick you out. That's what I'm feeling right now. You know, I'm feeling that I got approved for... You know, I'm feeling that uh I got approved for everything I went through. Because uh my deal with Team Hawks was I'm finished with deal with the contingents, if I get everything approved by the city and every, everything got approved. Everything went smooth, I didn't have any problem with inspection or conservation or anything like this. So I got inspected by everybody and I, and now it's just like, I just heard that whatever, I just got approved for the other house. I never heard about that, that that the subdivision was this or that or that. I don't understand as As this is part of a plan, planning board and planning board revised the the plans, planning board revised the site everything before it gets approved. The only thing that we were missing was Larry.
They never, these pl- plans never came before the planning board.
Bring the name out up here, sinus.
They haven't been before the planning board since when, two thousand five? No, I'm talking about when they came before the bill, when they first applied for the um subdivision. They haven't been back since when, when's the last time they were in front of the planning board, two thousand five?
For the road, I believe.
Oh, nineteen for the road, right?
In nineteen, they came, they came for the permission for the road.
So do we need a motion for anything?
Can I, can I just show you something?
No, he's he's withdrawing.
Let me just
I think parliamentary procedure require a motion to allow me to withdraw.
Do we, do we want to make a motion to have uh Town Council, we'll get to what's going on and the, everybody make sure.
Application.
Right.
To
So I'm looking, I'm looking for a motion to withdraw the A and R that's presented here tonight.
Per request of the owner.
Per request of the owner.
So move.
Chris Riley, I mean Mr. Riley, sorry. Do we, do we need a motion, that he just withdraws, we don't make a motion. We don't make a motion for him to withdraw, he just, just don't, yeah.
Okay.
Should Nancy have that?
Nancy, you don't take this.
No, we don't, there's no motion.
Nancy, Nancy will need to file that motion.
Remove it, remove that, but does he need to move, to go back?
Yeah, so The plans uh from the back house with the road, there was a road.
Oh.
This this road
I'm not, yeah, I'm not, I'm not wrong, uh two thousand twenty-one.
You gotta vote it.
I'm gonna check out.
I was here But it was only for the road, it wasn't for the subdivision.
No, no, there was uh the subdivision
They had no access to this back lot.
Yeah, we we bought the 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 land with the subdivision.
I have everything right here in front of me, so. But the problem being is
Might as well.
That lot
No need for a final.
Okay. So you made the motion, I'll second you.
We're not conform with the shed.
I
And uh Can I, can I get your opinion?
It's just a bold opinion.
Yeah, yeah, what what should I really do with the shed? So should I try to renovate for the for the
I can't answer that
property that it is right now or demolish?
I can't answer that question. That question you'll have to bring up to the building department.
Okay.
So if you know Dan and you know Mike, ask them what you should do.
Yeah, I was with Dan uh last week, he told me, Fabio, I don't see any problem on the on the subdivision because it's just change offline. The only thing I can tell you is uh definitely you can use as a shed. Because you cannot have two dwellings on a single family lot. So he told me that I, I, I thought was uh
And you're gonna sell the front lot.
Yeah, two twenty-five is gonna be a salad, we cannot keep it.
If you do that, then you're gonna have an undersized lot, so that's what, that's why you withdraw.
Yeah, because the 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 square line you said, right, okay. Yeah, that makes sense, if we don't have this space, we don't have this space, I tried because I I I I'm telling the truth. The only thing I thought about the shed was, this is uh, because I I am a contractor, so I I don't build houses because those are the two first ones that I I'm building. I do like renovations, all that stuff for over ten years. Uh and then when I saw the 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 shed, I know a shed like that in these days cannot be built at all. And because was there, I was like, why give to whoever is gonna buy the land if I can have it? And the engineer told me I could have it, so he working it out and it's not true. You know, I I just waste my time and my money. Because I could just get with the shed the way it is, get it approved by the city already together with the with the front land to get whatever, like a a new siding, new roof and a new floor. Because I'm not selling a a a crappy without the house that I was saying, or either demolish without the house.
So
So that was the only uh uh thing that I thought. But I'm 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 not really dying for the shed at all.
For point of clarification though, there are issues um with the lot, because there was a subdivision filed, so next steps? Should we should we advise him what his next steps are?
Correct me if I'm wrong, uh Mrs. Schumer, if he puts that up for sealed, is there gonna be an issue?
No, the front land is existing, right?
Because it's
We still haven't addressed the issue of the subdivision expired, don't we have to address that subdivision issue?
In my opinion, I think, I think he needs to come back to you to revive the subdivision and so he hasn't, he has an approval of a subdivision that's in existence when you complete the house.
And uh what should I do, like go to my engineer? Ask him to uh redraw both of the 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 properties with the line that it's uh whatever is the the subdivision? And uh what what else?
So it's similar to what the previous application was, where they were, they were requesting an extension of the subdivision, that's it.
Okay.
And he would do that through Nancy? You would go to the town hall and see Nancy and you would file for an extension?
Can I, can I see you tomorrow so you can kinda help me out, guidance with whatever I need you to make?
What do we do with him?
They, she leaves at noon or
He withdrew the A and R, but doesn't, it doesn't negate the issue that he has an expired subdivision, so to finish and move forward with this lot, he has to come back before the board with, for the subdivision, then he can address those issues.
Can I make a question?
The expired subdivision includes the lock lines for the lock that's on right on Walnut Street?
We have to research all that, we need to go through all that.
I mean, if he has that.
Yeah, no, the the first one, it's not, the first one was existing. He kind of withdraw whatever line to try to sell the back.
You have a copy of the original subdivision?
The the original one, I I
You'd have to look at the one that's on file.
We can, we can check out.
Yeah, yeah, I'll
You found the one on file?
Let me see if it's the same one I have.
Is any further discussion tonight even necessary at this point?
Yeah, that's exa- that's exactly what I have. It seems like that the the whole line, uh Team Hawks he sold these I don't know, two thousand four, two thousand five, two thousand six, something like that, so that is a house right here, which is two twenty-one. Yeah.
And then you get the new one.
Yeah, and then I got this road and do this by house right here. After that, we bought the land from uh he moved it out to Maine. And then we demolished the house and got a permit for the new house, which is already extracted already. Yeah, you see the, you see these lines? Oh, okay. Yeah, I know, you see these lines?
We'd like to close the meeting. If if we'd like to discuss it afterwards. Do I get a second motion to close?
You made the motion?
Oh, David?
Aye.
Motion passes by the zero, this meeting is adjourned.